I would like to welcome everybody to the Fayette County Board of Education's special meeting, virtual meeting, August 12th, 2020. The time is 5:32 PM. And I'd like to welcome all of those that are watching on FCPS.net or over Facebook or another avenue this evening. Pursuant to KRS 61, excuse me, pursuant to KRS Chapter 61, notice is hereby given that on August 11th, 2020, the Chair of the Fayette County Board of Education called a special meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, August 12th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. The Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will conduct a virtual meeting on Wednesday, August 12th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. This will be a virtual meeting streamed online for the purpose of discussion, board consideration, and approval of the vendor for the Virtual Learning Academy. The link for the meeting is FCPS.net/virtualmeeting. Please be advised in the state of a proclaimed national emergency and under a similar declaration by the Governor, it is not currently feasible for the Board to provide meeting room conditions in the face of COVID-19, a highly contagious virus that spreads between people who are in close contact with one another within about six feet. Under these exceptional circumstances in which the Commonwealth of Kentucky is confronting a worldwide pandemic while nevertheless needing to accomplish critical public business, pursuant to KRS 61.840, the Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will not provide a primary physical location for public viewing and will proceed pursuant to KRS 61.826 with concessions outlined in the Attorney General's Opinion OAG 20-05. Thus, the public can access the media via the live stream but cannot be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Daly, at this time, will you please take roll call?
Good evening.
Evening.
Ms. Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Daryl Love?
Present.
Ms. Kristi Morris?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Stephanie Spires?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. I'd like to begin again by welcoming everyone that has tuned in this evening to watch this evening's virtual meeting. And we will begin, excuse me, we'll begin this meeting with the reading of our mission statement by Board Member Kristi Morris.
Our mission is to create a collaborative community. Our mission is to create a collaborative community, my computer is not happy with me, that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris. First, I'd like to welcome the members of the public who've joined us virtually, but before we jump into our agenda this evening, there's a bit of business we need to take care of from our last meeting. Before we adjourned on Monday, we needed to take action to make the agenda dated August 10th, 2020, on which action was taken as part of the minutes, as if copied in the minutes verbatim. If it pleases the Board, a motion is in order at this time to make the agenda dated August 10th, 2020, on which action was taken on August 10th, 2020, a part of the minutes, as if copied in the minutes verbatim. So for clarification, we just got a little excited and we adjourned before we did that. So, so we got Mr. Love?
Yes.
In that motion?
I'll second.
In second by Mrs. Morris. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next, I will accept a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll make an emotion to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris, for that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, is that by Mr. Love?
Yes.
Alright, second by Mr. Love. So, do we have any further discussion about tonight's agenda? No other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Chief Operating Officer Myron Thompson, as our superintendent is in another meeting and will be hopefully joining us here in a few minutes, but if not, Myron is kicking us off. So, Myron, take it away.
Appreciate it, Stephanie. Thank you very much. I'd like to add my own welcome to any members of the public who are joining us for tonight's virtual meeting. We are here this evening to share information with the Board about the FCPS Virtual Learning Academy. We have an excellent team of district leaders, teachers, family, and community representatives, as well as students who have worked diligently with us on this project. The person leading this team is my colleague, Dr. Soraya Matthews, Secondary Director of Teaching and Learning, and it's my pleasure to turn the meeting over to her now.
Hello, and if you'd just give me a second, I will share my screen. So, we have, we've put together a presentation today that will kind of walk us through the process that we've taken, the steps we've taken thus far as we work to get our FCPS Virtual Learning Academy off the ground. We will start with just our first slide, let me make sure I'm working here. Here we go. Looking at our planning team, as Myron shared before, we had representations from both our district, our community, our families, and as you can see some of the names on this slide, I'm sure some of the names look very familiar to you. There is one more slide here. This includes, again, family, community members, people from our district office, and also we had a student planning team. So, as you can see, the students that are listed here are ranged from grade two, second grader, to 12th grade. So, we also brought in our student perspective and giving us some feedback around our vendor and our content provider. So, what is the Virtual Learning Academy? To make sure we kind of set the stage and knowing that everyone understands kind of what the academy is and what it seeks to do, it is designed for a small number of families who, for reasons beyond their control, their child's health, or the health of others in their home, they're wanting an option to return to school that does not include face-to-face instruction. And that's for the school year, for the 2020-2021 school year, and therefore, the Virtual Learning Academy becomes a viable option for those students. This is kind of our symbol in representing our Virtual Learning Academy. So, as we start to talk about our timeline and some things that we've done to date, of course, you all are very well aware of the survey that took place in July, asking families just some feedback and information on how they were feeling about coming back to school and whether or not a virtual option was something that families were interested in. From the information that was obtained from that survey, our superintendent brought forth an option, another option, it's option two, for families who were really seeking an opportunity to go back to school, but not in a face-to-face version, more all virtual. And therefore, we released an RFP on July 16th, just looking for our content provider and who that partner would be to partner with us in providing high rigor and, you know, what we expect to see even in our classroom, but in that virtual setting. On July 23rd, we brought forth a plan, our reopening plan to the Board, and the Board was able to see that as well lined out as an option two for those families. And on July 24th, the RFP closed, the window closed, we began our process of reviewing that RFP as a team initially with a rubric that we had designed prior to even publishing the RFP, rated and scored that. We got it down to about two, and then we pushed it out to some other groups, and our teacher teams, and our families, and our student teams. Then, beyond that, great news is, Monday, this past Monday, KDE approved our FCPS Virtual Learning Academy as an A5 program. Today, August 12th, we are before the Board asking for your consideration for that content provider to provide that online platform and that learning space for our students. And that kind of sets the stage for our rollout plan.
May I ask a question about the timeline real quickly before we move on? What is involved in the, what was involved in the KDE approval? Can you walk us through a little bit of that process?
I'll ask Myron to address that. He kind of handles all of that part because, you know, we have those processes in place.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Matthews. Tyler, there's a system called DASCAR that we submit that information to, to KDE, and they review that and give us feedback. And they were working with us in terms of what was needed. There was a little bit of confusion on the front end in terms of their dropdown boxes that didn't allow for this school year to start, so I followed up with them directly on that. They put me through their IT team who reviewed it, and they had some correspondence back and forth, and they got back to us on Monday saying that it had been approved in terms of the submission.
So, that approval is mainly on the purchasing end of things versus curriculum? Is that correct?
It's on the program side, actually. We're setting up this new A5 program. They had questions of whether it was an A1 or A5, as it opened to people from the outside inside, so there were some questions that we had to answer and submitted that, and I worked with Soraya to get a lot of that information that was provided.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, as we begin to look at our rollout plan, this past week...
Dr. Matthews, I got one more question before you get to rollout plan. Can you go back several screens and just very slowly and once again, go through it? Who is the VLA Academy specifically designed for? Can you just go through that one more time, please?
Okay. So, the Virtual Learning Academy is designed for that small number of families who, for reasons beyond their control, of course, their students' health, or the health of others in their household, that they made that conscious decision to not return to face-to-face instruction during the 2021 school year.
Thank you.
So, if I will pick back up on the rollout plan. This past Monday, we sent initial invitations to the families who shared in that survey in July, that they were interested and also shared their email addresses. We sent invitations to those families with the survey, just making sure that their interest was still there and making sure we had the accurate contact information on file. The deadline to respond to that invitation is actually tonight at midnight. As we stand, we have about 300-plus responses, so they're actively coming in, but again, that deadline does end tonight at midnight. Tomorrow, we envision opening up the invitation, so our entire program application that we would traditionally use for any of our programs in the district, we're going to open it up specifically tomorrow for the Virtual Learning Academy. And just to walk us through that application process, I want to switch screens here very quickly so you can get a feel for what that application looks like.
While you're in the process of switching screens, can I ask kind of the reasoning behind that quick turnaround there between sending out the notice on the 12th and then the, or the 10th, and then the survey being due by the 12th?
I think we just really wanted to get an initial understanding of what our numbers will look like from the families who originally shared that they were interested in the Virtual Learning Academy. We wanted to make sure that those numbers were pretty much still in sync as we start to open it up for more students. You should see on your side now that application for the enrollment, and I'm just going to walk you through to show you how simple this is, and I'm already logged in. This is not live yet, but it's, I'm able to, of course, go through it right now. So, as a parent, I would just choose that I'm either currently enrolled in FCPS or not, and I am currently enrolled, so I'm literally just going to walk through every step that a parent would have to go through. Sorry, looks like my login has logged me out. Just a second here. So, currently enrolled in FCPS, and then, as a parent, I just add some information about my student. What this does is it actually searches for the student in our database, so you don't have to fill in all of the boxes, or you don't have to give everything about your student. We find it because it connects directly to our Infinite Campus Student Information System. So, this is actually my child, my daughter here, so you just select the student and you begin your application process. Verify information, I won't scroll all the way down because it does have all of her identifiable information here, but as you can tell, it's a four-step process. I'll go to the very bottom, hit next. As a parent, it just wants to verify my information and ensure that that's all on file. I'll hit next here. Then you would choose the program, and right now, we don't have it activated, but it will be, and it will, in this list, it will actually say the FCPS Virtual Learning Academy. I'm going to just choose Success Academy because it's here, next, and then submit. So, that's all our families would have to do to actually go through the application process. I'll switch back to the presentation. Here we go. Alright.
Dr. Matthews, one quick question. Is that available in multiple languages or just English?
Great question. So, it is available in multiple languages. Right now, we are actually actively going through that process. It was already available in Spanish. Our team is working diligently as we speak to get that also translated into seven of our top languages in the district, so it will be available in multiple languages.
And one other follow-up question to that. If a family has problems, is there a number that they can call to help assist them in the application process?
Yes, we have a number and a email address. So, the phone number is our special programs phone number, it's the 381-7471, I believe, I think that's correct. And then, the email address is special dot programs@fayette.kyschools.us. Lisa, can you double-check me on the phone number?
Yes, Dr. Matthews, do you mind to just do that one more time, the phone number and then?
It's 381, I believe it's 4741, but let me pull it out real quick from the FAQs.
And will the invitation only, while she's looking that up, will the invitation only be sent out via email? Do we have, do we have a plan for any families that may not be accessible via email?
It will be sent out via email, text, and a phone call will also go out.
So, they can submit an application via the phone?
Well, they have to submit the application, it's all online. So, when we reach out to our families, we'll include a link to the application, and then they'll go through it online. It's all connected in the system. But the way that we will get that information to families is through different modalities, the email, text, and phone call.
This is the same way that you would apply to any of our programs?
Correct.
So, but the other program window has not opened yet, right? That usually opens mid-August. Okay.
Right.
So, this is how you apply to Spanish immersion, or RISE, or any of the others, and so the families are pretty familiar with this because it's the same program process.
Yes.
How long are those application windows typically open for specialized programs?
We usually leave them open for about a month because when we're accepting it's for the next year, for the following school year. So, we typically open it up the middle of August, and then we close it about, well, I guess it's a little bit longer than a month, about a month and a half.
And then, the window for this will be open for how long?
So, we are going to open it tomorrow, and we are planning, it's going to be a really quick turnaround with closing it on the 17th.
And what's our reasoning on that, on that quick turnaround there?
Well, we know we've got to go through the process of actually completing the application. Some students will have to have additional review, especially if they have specific service plans. We also have to register them, so we'll have to actually enroll them, depending on the number of students, of course. That process is a lengthy process. We need to get their schedule. We're talking about high school students to ensure that they're getting the credits that they're needing in order to meet graduation requirements. There are just so many other moving pieces and parts that need to take place before day one of school that we really need to start getting students in as soon as possible.
I can confirm that the phone number is 859-381-4741, and if we do have people with limited, limited access to technology, that phone number is rolling over to several different staff members who can help walk them through the application process if they need that help. The email is for special dot programs@fayette.kyschools.us. And just to follow up on Soraya's comments, we're starting, we're talking about for this school year. So, this is the time of year that people are used to focusing on going back to school and getting those registrations taken care of. This is when the staff has returned to the front offices, so registration for, for new students opened this week as well. So, this is really, you know, the time of year that people make those decisions for the coming school year. We, of course, have a much longer rollout process for the special program applications because there are so many of them. There are letters of recommendation sometimes that people have to get, they have to develop a portfolio, and those are decisions that people are making for the coming school year. So, there's much more lead time for people to really prepare for that process.
And speaking of just the current year, the KDE A5 approval that was mentioned earlier, was it just for the 2021 school year, or is that ongoing?
I believe that, I believe that once that approval is granted, Tyler, it's in there until we pull it back.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, we would hope we're going to close the application, the deadline for that is the 17th, August 17th, with sending out official placement invitations by the 20th, and then giving families a few days again to really accept those invitations, and that deadline is August 22nd. And that, of course, takes us into the next week, and what that starts to look like on that Monday, August the 24th, is we will begin core scheduling and making sure that students have access to all of the technology that they will need to essentially access the content, so all those technology tools that, that students are required to, to have. And also, we will do a virtual orientation for our families on that day, and then being prepared for the first day of school on August the 26th. And Jenny Dyer is going to pick up here.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. We're going to talk a little bit about the staffing model for the Fayette County Virtual Learning Academy. It's going to be staffed with accordance to the following student-teacher ratios, which are also our current ratios for all of our schools, being 24 to 1 in kindergarten through third grade, fourth grade is 28 to 1, fifth and sixth is 29 to 1, and seven through 12 is 31 to 1. KRS 157.360 does allow for a request for restricted or annual exemptions of class size as needed, so that process is in, is available if needed. The school counselor, there'll be one full-time school counselor there, and the other support will be provided and absorbed by, provided by our current staff, such as our program director, technology assistants, and other related services.
Now, Ms. Dyer, if I may interrupt with a question there, when we say one, do we mean one individual or one position? Does that make sense?
Right. It is one FTE, and we are currently, we have a posting for a full-time, looking for one that would be a full-time one staff member. There, if that is not put in place, we could then split that FTE into 2.5s or things like that, but right now, it's a full-time one, one FTE for a counseling position.
And is that true for the student-teacher ratios as well? Is it, are they FTEs or are they?
They, they are not, and I think that's on the next slide, but right now, we have advertisements for part-time. Now, the student-teacher ratio would still be that way, but the teacher that is assigned to the students may be a part-time teacher, not a full-time teacher, based on the program, on the virtual program.
Okay.
Involved with that. Okay. So, the positions were posted for the counselor and the part-time teachers on the 6th. We have interviews this week for a counselor, and hopefully, you are able to select, and then they will start working with the program on Monday, the 17th. The week of the 17th to the 21st, we'll be doing interviews for part-time teachers, and we will also be surveying our current teachers for interest in the extra duty assignment for those content areas. We spoke a little bit before, where we've talked about people that are providing those content-specific areas, are, especially in our high schools, they're used to things such as zero hours, what we call it here in Fayette County, when they teach an extra course for an extra duty for extra money. So, we are also going to look at our current staff to see if we have folks that are interested in doing that, because that's a part of our normal processes of every school and every school year, and that we have in place. And then, on the 24th, is when the teachers will begin in the Virtual Learning Academy.
Now, Jenny, when we spoke back in July, one of the things too was that some teachers who were extremely high-risk might also, are we still doing that? Like, so some teachers who, for whatever reason, cannot teach in the classroom, are some of them moving over to this as well in addition to the part-time?
Well, we'll have to look individually on the basis. Now, again, these are starting now, as far as on the 24th, but we, right now, those teachers are working through NTI.
Okay.
But it is out there for them to be able to apply as well.
Right.
But they are teaching virtually through NTI and remote settings, so they have those, that work location in place now in their current setting, and they are welcome to apply, and when they survey, we are going to try to look at all of them.
Right, because I know that was one thing, like, the superintendent and I had talked about in July, that some of them had shown some interest, but we also recognized at that time, there was some gaps as far as content area and grades and some things like that, and so that's why we would need to also be looking for part-time employees and some additional staff to merge it together.
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right. And when we know the students and the families that have determined that this is the right program for them this year, then we will know more about the specifics of the teachers and certifications that we need. Right now, we don't know those numbers and certification areas to make that exact match, but once we have that data, and that will happen simultaneously with the dates that you saw just a few minutes ago, so that we can work very diligently to make those matches.
So, for, for current FCPS teachers, would it be an extra duty assignment, or would it be an alternative placement? Because an extra duty assignment would be in addition to, you know, their responsibilities in the school day. So, so are there opportunities, or would there be opportunities for full-time current FCPS employees, once we get through NTI2DL, to transition to a full-time equivalent position in the Virtual Learning Academy? Or would that be considered, or would that not be an option?
We're going to be working with all the staff to try to make that match, the best match that we can, and all of those options that you just described are things that are going to be explored and be opportunities. So, there will be some courses that we won't need a full-time FTE for, so it wouldn't be something that would be a full-time job for someone for those particular certification areas. And again, until we know the data for the families and the students, we won't be able to say, yes, we would need a full-time biology teacher. Now, I, you know, it, we'll have to make those matches once we know how many students in each of those areas are going to be enrolled.
And in full disclosure, this is one of those things we kind of, you know, we learn as we go along, but we recognized after we did the survey, and then we did get the information, these are some questions I think we would have liked to have included, so we could have been a little more prepared to some degree. Like, I know that's one thing the superintendent talked, I talked about, like, we knew the content areas, and we knew the grades, and we knew some of this, but we didn't really drill down, and so we're kind of having to drill down with the applications now, which is part of this crunch versus being able to prepare slightly better.
That's correct, but you wouldn't know until you have the students who are committed to enrolling, because you would not want to take a teacher out of a William Wells Brown and place them here, not because it wouldn't be effective, but then you got to replace that teacher at William Wells Brown. You may not even need a full-time teacher. So, it may be, it's a blending of a model when it comes to teachers. It's what I said the last time we talked, we call it extra duty for extra pay, and you call it supplemental, as I used the example with Tyler. So, you may have that. We may have, I think Jennifer talked about some of the teachers who, did you mention that?
Yes, well, Mr. Murphy brought that up, and yes, I did confirm that they may be able to match those, so there may be some folks do want to work in this program.
Exactly.
Work out that we can, like a piece of a puzzle, we've got to put all those pieces together.
So, we would match that, we may have it where, we may just need some part-time support for some of these courses, so students could have as close to a synchronous experience as possible. So, that's what I said, it's a blending of all three. So that's what I said, it's a blending of all three. But all of them will be Fayette County Public School teachers.
Yes, they will all be employed by Fayette County, that's exactly.
They're, they're, they're our employees.
Dr. Matthews, I think.
All right, sorry, here we go. All right, so switching gears and talking about our R F P process. Uh specifically the content selection and who will be our partner in that work. Uh we did receive three R F Ps that met the minimum requirements of the advertised R F P. A team of our staff members from multiple offices conducted a review and evaluation of those submitted R F Ps. Uh again, using our rubric that was already designed, uh and two of the three were identified by, as viable options. Uh we then took those two uh and had them reviewed and evaluated with our families and our teachers and also our students. So our students, uh our student committee had an opportunity to explore uh both of those programs. So Program One and Program Two, uh as you can see here from the input of our students. And we're gonna let, um, we're gonna ask, I'm sorry, Roman to share about this slide.
No problem. Just wanna check, is my video and audio working correctly? Got you. Um, so as Dr. Matthews showed in the beginning, we had a student planning committee. Um, so they gave us some valuable info on uh between the two viable programs. Uh from this data, we see that Program One was easier to use. Uh they saw it as more interesting and they thought that other students would like it more than Program Two. So Program One was um from the student's perspective, their top choice. And at the bottom, we have a quote, it says Program One was very clear with all the assignments and had a much easier layout to understand. So that's sort of um the consensus that we got from the students.
Thank you, Mr. James. So as we start to look at the, the two programs essentially that we're talking about. Uh what we are putting forth are three possible options. Uh one being the Florida School, uh Flor- Florida Virtual School, I'm sorry. Uh which is a comprehensive course content K twelve and there you can see uh in the purple. Uh in the middle in the red-orange color is Edgenuity, uh also known as Odyssey Ware. Uh who can provide to us third grade through fifth grade supplemental course content. And sixth grade through twelfth grade comprehensive content. Uh but of course, that means that there would be no um course or, or uh content available for our primary students. Uh and then in the blue was, is a combination of the two. With Florida Virtual School providing content, comprehensive content for K five. And Odyssey Ware and through Edgenuity providing that content for six twelve. So those are kind of the three options that are, that are before us. Uh but with that said, our recommendation based on feedback from our students. Which was that, this was Program One in that slide. Uh and the feedback from our parents as well as the rubrics that we, from our scoring. Um our recommendation would be Florida Virtual School.
And it also includes the feedback from our teachers? About their user experience?
Exactly, yes. They really felt more comfortable or confident um with Florida Virtual. Uh that it specifically was designed for the virtual learning environment.
Dr. Matthews, can you go into a little bit more detail in terms of when you think about the, the value add of Florida? Um's program and platform versus the other?
Sure, so uh the value added, great question. So the value added for the Florida Virtual School platform is it is rooted in evidence-based instructional design principles. Uh again, it was designed for the virtual learning environment. Uh it is based on mastery-based, a mastery-based learning model for students. And it also offers a ti- it's a comprehensive, so it's totally comprehensive for K twelve. Um and it does build up on itself, so it has both the horizontal alignment and the vertical alignment. And it also includes electives. Uh there are, as far as the lessons and what that looks like for our students. There would be interactive lessons and modules that students can engage in, uh as well as videos. So there's some differentiated models there, written lessons, assessments, quizzes and exams for teachers to utilize as well as for students. So uh for that, for us, that's kind of the value-added piece of the Florida Virtual uh School Model content.
A, a question on the um, uh just by kind of a procedural question before we get into particulars of the F L V S model. So when we're looking at Virtual Learning Academy, if, if a family opts into this academy, it's a semester-long commitment. Um if they don't opt into it, they will be on N T I two D L. Until such a time as we choose to return to in-person instruction. If we get to that point of returning to in-person instruction and a family is not comfortable yet. Sending a child back into the classroom, i- have they missed the window to go into Virtual Learning Academy? Is, is there a virtual track for families in those situations?
There really wouldn't be. Um if they've been in N, N T I two D L. For a, a sen- a significant period of time and wanting to switch to virtual. Sort of halfway, sort of through, halfway through a semester or nine weeks in, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so if, if, when we return to in-person instruction, everyone who was on N T I two D L. Would have to go back to in-person instruction, is that correct?
Yes, yes, and it's because, let's say you had three thousand families. That wanted to switch over to virtual, you don't have the capacity. We'll be scrambling, we need to have a number wrote so we can plan to have the right number of teachers. Because I think earlier you saw sort of the class size, right? We still want to adhere to the Kentucky um Department of Education and the statutes of recommendation for class size. And it can be a little bigger, um, I, I think you saw that statute. So it would be hard, it, it'd be a disservice to the school, to, to a, to the district to lose three thousand to in-person. And have them go virtual and then you got more scram, how do you transition that? How do you come up with the grades and where they're at in terms of the course, that Florida Virtual course to drop them in? Also with these courses, we have to um go in, go in and add um Kentucky State standards as well. That's all one, that's all we have our teachers as well, so they know the standards. And okay, this standard is missing, we gotta go put this standard in. But you can, I mean, it's just, it can open a window to a slippery slope.
I've had this conversation with a lot of families this week and really when you explain it like that, it makes sense to them. The other thing is I think families have confidence in us as a board at this point. Because we really came out on the front end and really, you know, we, before the governor says September twenty eighth. We really said it's not safe to go back in the classroom. I mean, today I believe is the highest number of new cases that we've had. Uh and so the feedback I'm hearing from families who um is that they have the confidence in us as a board. That we're not gonna send their kids back into an unsafe situation. And when you really explain it to the families that the virtual learning is for the families that have a child or a student. Who for whatever reason really can't be in the classroom or they have a parent that can't be in the classroom. I mean, the parent that's high risk. Um and then also, I mean, I'll just be transparent, I am in the high-risk category. But I have made the decision to send my children to the N T I, um because that's what I feel is best for our family. Um and, and but also talking to my doctors and, and such as well. Um but you know, when you really put it like that, families really seem to understand, okay, this is who V L A is for. I talked to a mom yesterday who has one child with Down Syndrome, who is very prone to R S V and the flu. And the doctors um have recommended homebound for that child, but the other three will be doing N T I. Um and so when you really kind of break it down, and I think this is where we as a board have to really communicate this after this meeting tonight. Is who this program is for. But again, you, like I said, when I've talked to families, the feedback I'm getting is they are very. Pleased with the five of us for, I mean, pat ourselves on the back, but that they, they feel like we really do have the safety of their children. In, in our staff, in their um in mind. And so they don't, um, I think that is giving them more security. Where maybe in the beginning, some were more leaning towards V L A because they just didn't feel confident, comfortable or confident. But now that they've seen us take these steps and these procedures, um they're switching back to that N T I. Their comfort level is there. So we just, I think as a board, need to continue really explaining the difference between. Because there is a lot of confusion and we did, I mean, because we say virtual learning and there's really two virtual programs out there. So anyway.
Agreed. I mean, that's the, that, you, you can't underscore that enough. That this is if you have a, a child with a compromised immune system or there's someone in the immediate family. In that household has a compromised immune system. This is, and that's why we are designing this. It's not just because, you know, your child wants to, you know, do virtual learning all year round. You know, it should be really for those reasons. You know, those are the two reasons that someone should choose this program and therefore the number shouldn't be really high. If you shouldn't have that many students or, and I mean, about the family piece, I can't speak to that, but students that fit into this um, this particular model.
For most children remaining in their homeschool that's familiar with them, with their classmates that they know. Is, is the best for their mental health piece as well and, you know, belong where it's familiar. Um and so, you know, but these are children who are far outside that line. And again, um, you know, I've met with many of these parents this week and, and they're, you know, these are parents also that know how. To accommodate their child's needs in the sense of their mental health piece, making sure they maintain friendships with their kids at their homeschools. And such as that. Um and so I think as, while we explain it. Uh you know, it, the feedback I'm getting is very positive.
And, and Madam Chair, I add, I mean, it's like they're playing tennis, right? Those families want an option, they wanted an option. To continue to be a part of Fayette County Public Schools. But mitigate the risk of their child contracting COVID nineteen to zero. At least that pertains to going into a school building and that's real. And so in response to that. That's how we treated this program and doing it with our teachers. We know we have the best teachers, obviously victories in the classroom. And I want students in the classroom at the right time and safe to do so. Because even with a mask on and even looking forward, you know, and social distancing, you still have socialization. There's something there, you can look, you could kind of look to your left or other corner of your eye, use your peripheral vision, Darrell. You can see some people that you know and be seated in that classroom. And what that does for the family, knowing that their child is safe in school, learning with others. Even under these, uh this new normal, if you will.
What about our um children who um say are E L L population, I E P five oh four population? Or the ones in magnet programs for whom all of those factors apply? So does Virtual Learning Academy allow a uh continuity of, you know, A, E L L services? Um, you know, B, uh any special education services which the child's eligible. Family Resource Use Service uh Center uh opportunities uh and supports. Um and then of course, the specialized programming in our magnet programs. How, how do those students fit into this Virtual Learning Academy model?
Well, I, I tell you, the um, it's not designed to replicate I D Spanish immersion. Now your real strong, your magnet programs, again, um, you know, those are selective in, in, in programs. Um and they're powerful because of the victory in the classroom. It does provide an opportunity for those students that we can match and provide supports, obviously. Um so those students could be, you know, successful. But I don't think, you know, I'm, I'm kind of biased, I don't think you're gonna be as successful in a full-time virtual experience. As you are in a full-time in-person um classroom experience. But we're gonna provide the resources for those students.
Right, so to clarify, E L L, I E Ps and five oh fours, those students are still gonna get services. But if you're. A um program like Spanish immersion, there is no Spanish immersion component to this. Now the child, the student will keep their spot in the magnet school, but they may be behind their peers when they return.
They'll learn Spanish, but it may not, yeah, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Necessarily the same component to that. The other thing I just wanna chime in here too is for all of our programs, whether you're doing N T I or. Um the V L A, I wanna just remind parents to advocate and teachers and I, you know, to um. You know, you can modify your five oh fours and I E Ps for this um learning. And you know, that's something that parent, parents and teachers need to just keep communicating. And um, you know, I know I have one child that has an I E P and her teacher reached out to me today and called me and just said. You know, introduced herself, talked about how we were gonna run the plan, talked about if she needed breaks, wa- needed to watch the recordings later. Um and so that's just a reminder, cause I think some parents do have this concern, you know, my kid can't do this. Or my kid doesn't sit still, you know, some of the same accommodations you have in the classroom, you can still have. And or they might need to be slightly different. Um but that's just where communication and advocacy come in. And it's okay to speak up for your student, so.
Do we know who will be facilitating those kinds of services? Cause in a, a normal circumstance, you know, you would have an ARC. Um and you would have a committee that's made up of um, you know, a case manager that's familiar with the student and educators who are familiar with the student. So what if a, if we have a student who needs special education services in V L A. Does there then have to be a separate ARC conducted and then who would facilitate that? How, how are the part-time teachers?
It would be the school, it, it would be the school that would do it, very similar to our stuff now. Good, Amanda, because they know this child best.
Yes, so the same processes would be in place. We still have the same responsibility to provide a free, appropriate public education. Any changes that may be needed to the plans, uh to the individual education programs or the five oh four plans. Those would be made by the ARC team or the five oh four team. And our, we, our achievement and compliance coaches that are assigned to do that within the district would. Schedule and chair those meetings and there would be the same involvement of teachers and related service providers. And of course, the parent, as there always would be.
And then will they be trained on this Virtual Learning Academy model? So that they could understand what these students would be encountering to tailor their I E Ps accordingly and five oh fours?
Well, the special education teachers come to the, you know, bring with them. The um expertise in providing specially-designed instruction. I, I think all teachers are receiving um additional professional learning on uh in online learning and distance.
Yeah, distance learning, and I need eight students, five thousand.
Right, so um as far as additional training, I think that's something that's a district initiative. To support distance learning that's occurring. I'm not sure if I answered your question, Mr. Murphy.
I think that the teacher, the, the receiving school, let's say, so V L A. You know, teacher could explain and share that with them. That's special ed teacher that can say, you know, here's how services are delivered in this particular circumstance as we go forward with specially-designed instruction.
That's correct.
So the V L, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the V L A teacher who will not necessarily. It will not be a teacher associated with the child's homeschool. Uh the V L A teacher will collaborate with the student's case manager who typically works with the student. On a day-to-day basis. Is, is that a correct interpretation of what was just said or is it different?
There would be a special education teacher who is the case manager at V L A. So there will be special education teachers that are serving as case managers for students that are assigned to V L A.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, they would be providing the services on the I E P, whether it's um, you know, co-teach minutes, resource minutes, that sort of thing. They would be providing those um through distance learning, just as we are also doing right now with N T I two D L.
So do we have enough time built in with this short turnaround to make sure that those newly hired? Uh V L A special education case managers are brought up to speed with whatever ca- new caseload they're gonna be getting from. Our schools for these students enrolled in V L A.
Well, we get new students all the time in special education. So um, you know, they would have some preparation time, but again, I mean, a student could move in. Um at any given time and, and they have to become familiar with their I E P very quickly. Um and, and ready to provide whatever service. Um, and, and ready to provide whatever services the IP provides for.
But the VLA isn't sort of open enrollment.
Right.
So it's just a window right now. It wouldn't be open enrollment.
Well, I think being a parent of kids with special needs, what I was trying to advocate and get at is it's going to be an ongoing process because some of these IEPs and five oh fours are different. So for example, one of my children with a GI tube isn't going to need her teacher to be pulling out her, you know, um, feeding her during the middle of the day and stuff like that. So that would no longer be relevant. But she may need an additional food break during to go feed herself or something at a different time. So that's where I was saying the communication is just going to have to be ongoing as parents and, and the teachers both, I think, figure out what the kids' needs are because it is going to be different. Um, and that's where that communication piece is just, but I, is just gonna, um, you know, and that's why I just in advocating to parents to encourage them to advocate for their children as they recognize their needs. Um, you know, I'll even be honest, a couple of my kids, um, I adjusted their medicines with their doctors back in the spring because when I realized times that they might be overloaded in the classroom were different when they were at home. And some different things about their routines. And so I think, you know, those are just those kind of advocacy pieces. It just looks different. And then when we go back into the school, I anticipate it'll look different again. And so, you know, we may have to make modifications as well. And that's okay because our staff is amazing and, you know, we just need to communicate to them and they'll work with us to do this, I think.
Okay. So if we are ready for the next slide.
One, one more concern I have about curriculum. Uh, when I was reading the RFP, I noticed it said, um, I'm now on page thirty-six of the RFP. It says, while our national courses are not specifically written to Kentucky academic standards, they meet national common core standards with features that allow flexibility in customizing content. Uh, though our product sector term key client hosted licenses provide FP, FCPS students and teachers flexibility, allowing them to add content or hide content within courses. Will there be, is there going to be enough time embedded into this beginning for teachers to make those adjustments? To ensure that this content is aligned with, uh, Kentucky academic standards so that, you know, if a student is on in VLA for the first semester, uh, at, and they're at, you know, Winburn Middle School in seventh grade and they come back to Winburn for the second semester for in-person, is that transition going to be smooth because they've been following the seventh grade Kentucky academic content standards?
They give you a soft one there.
All right. Great question. So one of the things that we have already done, and this, this actually aligns with what we're doing for NTI two D L as well. Um, our curriculum documents, our pacing guides are all going to be aligned. So district-wide, we have those district documents. That's no different than when we get into the virtual environment. That will be both aligned to our Kentucky state standards and aligned to our pacing guides in our district. Therefore, when a student has to or chooses to go back to their homeschool in January, it will be a seamless transition because we will already have aligned their instruction in the first semester to what they would be getting in, in their homeschool in that first semester. So it's just, that's seamless. That's something that, I mean, that's just, that's, that's what we do.
So, so really, if I understand Dr. Matthews, what you're saying is this is more like a platform that you have, it has various modules. We'll take whatever our standards are to make sure that the modules that we're using within the academy aligns, correct?
Correct. Okay. So the next slide.
I'm sorry for not, I was going to say, you think about Imagine Learning over the summer.
Yeah.
Imagine Learning is a platform that had its own content. Right? And so areas we need to add, you know, you're able to add so aligns with Kentucky state standards. Students wouldn't know it necessarily unless it's, you know, Kentucky state history or something like that. They may not notice it at all. But it's the same thing. You're talking about a platform with course content that is already designed for online.
So essentially too, though, if you think about this, because I think when we talked about in Academy, it's not like it's an outsourced type of service. You're just getting a platform that you can use. We're staffing it, we're managing it with our own teachers.
That's correct.
Talking about, you're talking about the linkage with students back to their homeschool. So it's not like it's a complete separation per se.
There's no separation. It's right. It's STEAM Academy, right? So STEAM Academy does theirs project-based. Right? Covering the Kentucky state standards. You go there, you're going to get introduced to a different instructional model. It's more project-based and on Friday, students have to, you know, go on their own and, and, and do some other learning experiences, et cetera. That's an A five program. Success Academy, A five program. The girls, uh, my girl's K to H stem rise academy is an A five program. Carter G. Woodson Academy is an A five. You got these programs in Kentucky to do, um, to create these sort of, you know, opportunities for learning, for growth, to do things differently. Obviously, we wouldn't have thought about this but for the pandemic and but for families through the survey and even prior to that, saying that under no conditions that they risk their child's life to going back into our in-person learning environment.
But just to clarify on Board Member Love's point, these, these teachers would be independent from a child's homeschool is my understanding. We're hiring FCPS teachers, yes, but they're, they're, we're hiring part-time staff to facilitate this. So it necess- whereas NTI two D L, a child is working with, uh, a teacher in their homeschool uh, who they may or may not be familiar with. It may be a new teacher with a new school year. It may be a teacher they've seen or be, uh, familiar with. Whereas in a Virtual Learning Academy model, um, it may be a, a teacher employed by Fayette County Public Schools, but it's not necessarily a teacher that when they return to their homeschool, th- they'll see again, right?
Well, you can add, you could teach at STEAM. You could be at STEAM Academy and return to your homeschool, which could be Brown Station. You're not going to see that teacher at STEAM again. Uh, y- you could be at Carter G. Woodson Academy and learning there. And then you go to your homeschool, which could be Lafayette. You don't see those teachers again. Some of the teachers will be, you know, whether they're part-time that you, it's a virtual learning academy. So they'd be part of your learning experience. Was a part-time teacher or whether it's a teacher, I call it extra duties for extra pay. I think you call it supplemental duty here. That's that same teacher that you would see making up your learning environment. Those are your teachers in VLA.
But let me answer this question. It's just a follow-up and I think I'm getting to what my board member Tyler's talking about a little bit. There's nothing, even though they are separate, I understand that, but there is nothing to prevent a teacher in VLA from contacting a teacher if they, let's say, for example, they have a questioning student. Correct?
Yeah, nothing at all. Just like Carter.
Yeah, even though they're separate, they're still within the Fayette County Public.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And I was going to say, I look at it, the school that I think this most closely, or the program that I think this most closely aligns with at the moment is Rise. And the reason I think that is because Rise is also a brand-new program we're launching this fall. We've hired new teachers there, um, and a new principal from Chicago and, or a new um, program chair from Chicago and, um, you know, the students who will be starting at Rise don't know these teachers. So these are not going to be teachers that are familiar with them. I mean, they've met them through orientations just like the V A L, VLA students. Now the difference is the students at Rise will stay at Rise. And the VLA program, we hope, will eventually end as we return back to normal. Um, and so I think that is the one difference here, but I just want to kind of put the consistency that this will not be our only program that will be starting this year that students will be introduced to new faculty and new staff through a virtual format.
Exactly. If you got to go back to the why, why have VLA? Because your families told you through the, the first survey that they don't want their children back in a traditional school in-person setting because their child may have a compromised immune system or someone in their immediate family may have a compromised immune system. And so you still have to educate those children. You can't throw them by the wayside. They're not expendable. So you got to create something to give them, will be, you know, for us, a rigorous curriculum with our great teachers attached to it. It makes it even better. And that connectivity, um, to Fayette County and that they stay in their homeschool so that they don't have to, you know, go through a process again. It's just, you know what? I want to sit this one out. But I still want to learn. And I have a right to learn, a right to my education. So what does that education look like?
Um, I have a question to follow up with that. Um, so if they're still sort of assigned to their school, but just sitting this one out, as you say, in the virtual academy, um, until the virus hopefully, uh, gets back under control. How does the funding work for those kids that leave their schools for this? Does the funding stay at their homeschools or?
Yes.
And lose that?
Yes. This is not the money follow the child. That's not what we're saying.
I find, okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're, you're welcome, Board Member Morris. We're still, so if you're at a school and let, to your point, Board Member Morris, and let's say in, how many kindergarten students do we have registered? Or families that affirmed out of the initial list?
We have nineteen kindergarten.
Nineteen kindergartners. Right? And how many, how many elementary schools do we have? Yeah, thirty-six, right? So just because you lose one student, right? Or half and lose one student. You know, we're not, you're still going to keep that, that, that funding for them. And we're not raising taxes, the tax rate. So we've got to make it work within the COVID dollars. Because that's what's actually creating this expense.
So.
So, to that point, then, on, we, we saw the value, the figures for the, uh, virtual learning model. Uh, do we have an estimate of total price tag that includes the staffing costs?
We won't know too. We know all the students. So you got nineteen students in kindergarten so far. But once we open it up, we could have more. We could have nineteen, could be the number. And for that, you necessarily, you could do, you know, sort of a part-time teacher for the core content. And what that looks like. You could have students who want to take some courses in middle school that are more specialized and we're doing extra duty for extra pay for our teachers. If you want to find out from our teachers, how many of them would want to, to pick up some of these courses? And we just pay them extra duty for extra pay. That's what I call it. I think you call supplemental. So don't be confused with the terms. Right? And then there's some teachers that you had talked about earlier, Tyler, that we're already paying for. So it would look different based on, I think it's going to be a blending. We won't know till we have the students and be able to lay out their schedules.
Okay. So once we know the students will be able to then be able to understand how much we're going to have in terms of and need, I should say, in terms of our staffing. I, I want to go back because I, Dr. Dr. Matthews kind of laid out this, this overall timeline. And let's just say we kind of move forward. You go through the process of understanding how many, how many students are going to be a part of, of the academy there as well. And my question would be around their onboarding. And how quickly will we get these particular, uh, teachers on-boarded? Uh, and the, and, and is that a concern for you in the time that it's going to require them to learn the platform and usage?
So their current teachers, with the distance learning right now and the professional development we're doing, um, makes it a little more seamless. If we are hiring, you know, sort of new part-time teachers, because it is COVID nineteen, the reason why we're here in the first place, then we have to do some training for them that might be a little more. All of them would get trained in how to use the, the, but this is Canvas as well, the platform. So our secondary teachers are using Canvas, so that should be familiar, but certainly to learn the inner workings. So how long would that take to answer Board Member Love's question, we think, that PD?
So the great thing about our professional learning that we're doing this week is because most of it is hosted via Zoom, we have recorded it. Um, or it's asynchronous and it's set up as a Canvas course. So as soon as we have teachers identified, we can plug them into that Canvas course and they can start working to onboard themselves. Or we can share those videos with them. So it's really, I mean, the work is already done. It's just a matter of identifying the teachers, then loading them in those, the, the core, the courses that are needed and then having them kind of start to lead themselves through that professional learning.
But I think you want to know to get familiar with whatever option
Platform.
The board chooses, yeah, platform.
So the, the platform itself, it has about, I think there are, um, two days of onboarding for professional learning um, that we know will need to start out. And we have that essentially lined out for that first, that Monday and Tuesday, uh, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth for teachers who are identified. And that's just specific to the content provider. Like I said before, there will be other PD that can be shared well before then.
I want to be respectful too. Um, how many more slides do you have in your deck?
Three more, I think.
Okay. Um, because here's one question, just to kind of move through this, you kind of go through it. Cause there, there's always going to be this question around, how do we monitor what's actually happening? Can you speak to that just kind of briefly? If that's in your slide deck, I'll save that question until later.
Well, when you say monitor, do you mean like academically?
Uh-huh. From an academic perspective, just to see, you know, making sure that the curriculum is actually being taught at a certain level. Students are actually getting, and you have some feedback that's kind of built into it from families as well as students. Is that a part of the process?
Yes. So I'll speak to it a little bit and then if Carl wants to come off and share a little bit more, we can go deeper. But from the start, we've already partnered with our data team and asked them to, as we identify students, we're going to start to track that progress and have that comparison, uh, to ensure that our students are meeting the rigor of the standards. But along the line, we're also going to have formative assessment that's going to be directly embedded. So our teachers are going to formatively assess our students. We're going to be diagnosing their learning, uh, from the start of course. Uh, so all of those great strategies that you see in the classroom that typically happen between the four walls, we're going to do it as well. It'll just be in the virtual environment and our school leader will be that person that's holding that data accountable. So we will make sure that that learning is taking place.
And since some of the formatted data, I'm sorry, which to add to a Board Member Love is right here, right? Assessments, quizzes and exams are embedded. So as you move through, at certain points, you have an assessment, a quiz, a exam. That's just going to give you quantitative data. Uh, but we also focus on the whole child and looking at a social emotional learning curriculum, um, even though it's delivered virtually. But the resources are maybe shared because our, our, uh, the, the ratio is so low. One to two fifty, one to two forty, et cetera. It might be going to be able to share some of those resources when it comes to mental health professionals, et cetera. Because this shouldn't be that big. We should be able to share the resources.
And are these just designed to be asynchronous or synchronous? Is it self-paced?
It's both, right? Because if you're a teacher, let's say, like I used before, you're doing AP US government politics, right? Or you just, and, and you're teaching during the day, and you know, your students in person, right? Or through some sort of hybrid model. But we're paying you supplemental. You may just be going off facilitating with these students that are self-paced and kind of encouraging them, looking, giving feedback, et cetera. It may be that if you're a teacher that, um, let's say is part-time instructor or full-time based on, um, whether or not you could, you know, um, it's safe for you to teach based on health reasons, et cetera. You could do some of this synchronously. Does that make sense?
Yes. Is that, are there, are AP and IB courses going to be available on Virtual Learning Academy or?
Not, not, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. Um, uh, can you repeat it for the public, please?
Will AP or IB courses be offered on the Virtual Learning Academy?
IB will not. Right? And AP to the extent that that aligns with a student's schedule. Right? So again, we don't know how many, you know, let's say juniors, seniors we're going to have in that sense. Then we lay out their schedule, even taking their schedule from their high school, let's say. If those were the courses on there, we're going to try to identify and match those courses up. But for those courses, we'll be looking at supplemental, I think you call supplemental duty for those, for those courses if possible.
So if we have a family that's trying to decide in the next week whether or not to enroll in this because of mitigating, um, health circumstances. and one of the determining factors is they wanna make sure that their child continues in an AP program. Is, is right now the response is, that's to be determined, or how, how do they navigate that decision?
Well, they would, they would, we would look at the child and look at the course, you know, sort of schedule, their transcript, and what's next. And then obviously, we would look at our current staff to see if someone would wanna take it up as supplemental duty.
Do we have an indication based on the three hundred that have already expressed interest on what that might, what those numbers might look like?
You mean what their schedule might look like?
Yes, and what, what types of courses that they would need to be provided?
Not yet.
Other ones, it's just that window to affirm today?
Right.
Yeah, so we're gonna wait, the window closes this evening, and then we'll do the follow-up. They come somewhere elementary, like Sabrina said, nineteen kindergarten students, we know what that looks like. Um, I, I didn't hear the high school total yet.
I don't have that yet.
So, so total three hundred right now, which is what I would expect that are actually, you know, have an immune, um, can be compromised immune system or going home to someone in their immediate family. Uh, but shit, I just shouldn't expect forty-two thousand. Okay, Sabrina.
All right, so the last couple of slides are just samples of what a schedule might look like for a student um, as they start to prepare for the virtual learning, uh, environment, Virtual Learning Academy, Academy. Uh, and it kinda lines out, uh, this is an elementary, and this is very, very much similar to what you would see if you were in an elementary school, what your schedule might look like. Um, SCL, morning announcements, language, language arts. You know, that course is automatically embedded. And then we're also gonna bring in Imagine Learning, which we utilize in our summer program. A wellness break, specials uh that are limited, of course, Imagine Learning Math, and then, of course, a math class. Individual student support, that's where a student has identified for either by the teacher or the student themselves wanting to reach out for some individualization, um, help and support from their, from their, from their teacher. Uh, science and social studies, writing, and then evening help hours uh, just for, you know, as scheduled with your teacher to support students in the evening. That's a, a sample elementary schedule.
That's to be negotiate, you know, that's to be worked out.
Yeah.
Can't.
So, and here is a sample middle school schedule of what it might look like for a student and when they get their schedule. Uh, again, having those core content classes with some uh electives available. Uh, again, we're also utilizing Imagine Learning uh with our middle school students and having that embedded in their schedule throughout the week and their virtual learning. So just a, a very simplistic schedule, and it looks a lot like a schedule from a middle school student from a middle school, um, that's not virtual. And, sorry, the high school, and this is just a sample. Freshman schedule, right, and it's a A-day, B-day type of a schedule, which is typically what we would see in our high schools as well. Uh, and then it's very much a sample because we know that it really does depend on the student, and we have to essentially um, schedule our students individually based on their needs and the credits that they need for graduation. Uh, so these are uh the core content classes, and you can see there's an Honors English there, and then some elective classes as well. So that just kinda shows what a sample schedule will look like for each of the, the grade levels. And that really is the end of the presentation.
On the scheduling piece, I, I know we mentioned earlier there'd be one counselor. Is, so will that, will that counselor also be responsible for scheduling those uh students, or will that be their homeschool counselor? Um, how does the logistics of scheduling look?
It will be the counselor for the Virtual Learning Academy.
And we'll do with the, the um sending school as well, as to, you know, their transcript. They should already have a schedule, you know, so what's their schedule now? And what is it that the courses we, you know, may offer, um, that could be comparable? You know, if not, the exact courses in their schedule.
Exactly.
And then our, our students primarily have Chromebooks, is that correct?
Yes.
They do.
Okay, cause one of the things that, that concerned me in the RFP um for the Florida uh Virtual School is uh, the mention that lightweight devices such as Apple iPads, Google Chromebooks, and tablets have limited support for Java or Flash, which still appear in about a quarter of their course catalog. Do we know what kind of impact that would have? Is that, is that, does that quarter represent courses we would be using? I- is it gonna be compatible with our student devices?
So Bob did some additional research on that because of that statement.
Wait, Bob.
Bob can share, and he can give some great news on that.
So, one of the reasons that Florida Virtual says that is essentially to kinda cover their bases. Um, a few years back, Chrome um stopped playing Flash automatically. One of the things that we've been able to do, we have, I have an amazing technology staff, and so we have been able to mitigate a lot of those issues in order to allow that content to still play on our Chromebooks. And so we, we have some settings and things in place. So for us, that twenty-five percent is probably down into the single digits of percents on those classes. And so we have a couple of options that we can do with that. Um, the courses still function, but those individual mod, not even the modules, it's even down below that, individual pieces of media within those modules won't, won't play. So they will still, even in that small percentage of courses, they will still get the vast majority of the content. And then we can make arrangements to either supplement that with a non-Flash um piece of media or something like that. So we um actually went through quite a bit of this type of work with other platforms that still use Flash. And so we're able to mitigate the vast majority of that twenty-five percent that Florida Virtual says that um won't work on a Chromebook.
Superintendent Cock, um.
Yes.
As a program school, our programs don't have SBDMs, but. Schools do have boards or, and have ways for parental involvement. So what is the governance?
There is no.
Or what is, is there any type of, um, I mean, kind of just that? Cause I think there's some confusion out there, so maybe just kinda.
Some of your A-five programs do not have SBDMs. Your schools identified as CSI do not have SBDMs. You may have an advisory board or something like that, um, but it's still ultimately, it's not the, the formal governance model with the A-five programs and schools that were identified as CSI. So you're putting something together just for a year. That's the intent, hopefully just for a semester, if we have a vaccine in, in January twenty twenty-one. So yes, you, I mean, you have a school counselor sort of, you know, served in that capacity, looking to get this right. We could have, um, you know, sort of advisory and, and, and similar to what you have at CTE, et cetera. But you're not gonna go too deep because you're not expected to be around long. But you do, you know, you could have, you know, constant way, obviously all schools do, to get input from those families that are in the program. That's more important. To get input from families and students that are experiencing the program, so you can know where to make adjustments in real time.
Thank you for that answer. Are there any additional questions for the staff at this time?
Uh, simple question, uh, will, will the reporting work the same way, Manny, for parents? Would parents get the same kinda updates on progress and grades uh as they normally would?
Appreciate that. Thanks, your Daniels. I'll let, um, Sabrina answer that question.
Yes, so uh, just like our Canvas is in our district, it is directly connected to our student information system, which is Infinite Campus. So the grades are fed directly into Infinite Campus, and therefore we will have report cards and everything that you would traditionally see in traditional schools as well.
A, a follow-up on that point, do we have, do we know much about the chain of custody of student uh data retention and records? Does um Florida Virtual School retain student records? Or um, how, how does that, how is privacy and data impacted by using something like Florida Virtual School?
This is Bob again, so, um, one of the things about the Florida Virtual, this model that we have, um, they do not get any of our student data, so they are providing content to us. And that's the client-hosted part, so we're the client here. Um, and so we will actually be hosting this data, keeping the data within our systems. Um, and that was one of the strengths of this system as well, because we did not have to share student data outside of our system. So, um, it is all within, um, within our current systems.
And I would just add to that, um, this is Shelley Chatfield. Uh, Mr. Murphy, that even if they were, if they are in contact with us, they are bound by the laws of FERPA. So they would have the same requirements we would, including data requirements, reporting requirements if there were a breach. But we are confident we won't be sharing data with them.
So I just wanna say, I think some of the confusion, to be honest, is like just the name of this program, like it's Florida Virtual School. So people are gonna think like, oh, it's a school. But really, it's very similar to Imagine Learning, correct? Like, it's a, it's a program that we're contracting with to provide content and additional resources to our students.
That's it, and, and, and I'll tell you, Madam Chair, there's a district that's been using this content for over ten years in Kentucky with the blessing of KDE as part of their Virtual Academy. And so, as we reached out, as a high-performing district will do, you reach out to those that are in the state that already have a model that's exemplary, and you learn from them. And they tell you what works and, and what they're doing, and I gotta give kudos to Kentucky Department of Education because they've been with us pretty much every step of the way. So when, you know, this is a program, again, a, a district's already been doing this for ten years. Um, we're kinda following that footstep with the support and partnership with KDE as it pertains to a Virtual Learning Academy, and you hear about this, you know, with districts all across Commonwealth right now and across the country, are providing a virtual option for families who don't want the in-person experience. Your fear, again, that their child has a compromised immune system or someone in immediate family does.
Are there any additional questions for the staff at this time?
I, I think the biggest, and one of the biggest concerns I've heard, and really what makes it different from like uh Imagine Learning or even Connections or Wonders or some of those things, is that those serve as supplements to uh instruction that is ultimately designed by our um teachers in home schools who know the students and work with students on a regular basis. So, um, this, this.
That's not necessarily true.
This is seen, go.
Go ahead.
This is seen as something that largely, uh, I, I mean, it's essentially replacing, right, full-time school for these families. So, um, I, I think there's just a lot of uncertainty about it, especially given the quick turnaround, um, honestly. Um, so my understanding, just to clarify a couple of things, are we, is this the only application window? So, once this application window closes, you're locked into your decision. Is there gonna be a second window in the second semester if, God forbid, we're still in the midst of COVID nineteen? Or how's, how's that structured for families?
So Board Member Murphy, you, you would, we would have to do that for second semester. Give an opportunity for families, say, you know what, this is just too much, you know, looking at uh the district, was it Indiana, whatever? That opened for the first day and had a positive COVID nineteen test, and now folks gotta learn, gotta be quarantined and all of that on the first day of school. So, you know, a family that may be going through that experience may say, you know what? I, I wanna choose something different than to have this sort of, you know, um, to be having this risk each and every day. So we'll have to put a window up for that as well. That's correct. But what I was getting ready to say is that, you talk about Imagine Learning, et cetera, we also have Odyssey where and that counts as the core content that we didn't design. So we use that as well. You just don't see it because they use it inside their school. And, you know, that's intentional. But for this, you need the resources of your entire system, so you don't take to, Board Member Morris's, yeah, Morris's point, you don't take resources away from schools. So you need the resource, the rely on the entire system, and this is a result, again, of COVID nineteen. But for COVID nineteen, we wouldn't be in a situation, and many districts wouldn't be in a situation. Look through the Commonwealth, I'm sure your district has a VLA.
I'm really sorry to interrupt. My puppy has an iPhone, and I can't sit here any longer watching it, so excuse me just a moment.
Oh, no problem, partner.
Well, iPhone too.
Well, Manny, can you clarify, or do we have to wait for Christie? I'm sorry.
Need to wait.
Yeah. Manny, can you clarify the process? I know this closes at midnight tonight. And we have so many moving parts. We have intended, unattended consequences. This is, this absurdity we're dealing with. But, uh, if we go back to school, we're in, in school learning, or we're doing some kinda combination of that kinda learning. And we have kids uh or kids that have become compromised at some point. Um, or kids that come to us mid-semester at some point, or those kinda things. We, of course, this will be available for them as well, right?
No, unfortunately not. It, it's not gonna be an open enrollment sort of process. Because you wanna be able to manage based on the limited resources that you have. If a student is in our schools right now, I'm sorry, let's say you look ahead and we look ahead and it's December, you know, um, or November, and we have in-person, and COVID nineteen, there's a case. Those students then would go to NTI two D L. You would go back to that over that period of time until they're back in school again.
If we get, if we get a child mid-semester that's compromised health that comes to our district.
Oh, yeah, if, yes.
They would go, would they go to NTI? I just wanna clarify for parents.
Yes.
Or would they go virtual?
That would be a different decision. So let's say I was a, a family coming from a district that I was already in the Virtual Learning Academy because of my health, and I'm transferring to Fayette County or moving to Fayette County, and certainly. So if someone comes to us and they have that, to your point, Vice Chair, then yes, he would, you know, have a, a, an exception because of that.
Okay, but that would only occur for the case of a transfer, correct?
That's what he was talking about, yeah.
Okay.
But if they're, the kid in the district, so for example, I had a child that had a surgery, you know, middle eight through last semester, that would put her in a compromised situation. So let's say my child has this surgery in October, and suddenly is now, would they go? Could they have the option to maybe on a case-by-case basis?
We would look at that, those exceptions case by case, but, you know, that shouldn't be the norm.
Right.
You know, students shouldn't be, you know, but you never know, depending on if we have sports, right? And whether or not we got fall sports, right, or, you know, whether or not it's gonna be these big injuries. But you're right, it's kind of, here's the rule, but obviously the rule has exceptions, and things that are case by case. But generally speaking.
Would homebound still be in play?
Yes, we still have homebound.
So there still could be that option too.
Yes, we still have homebound.
So a child may say, do homebound and stay with their home.
If this doesn't, if this doesn't, you know, erase homebound at all. That, that's a great point.
Does anybody else have any additional questions for the staff?
So as you share this with folks, let them know, it's for those with a compromised immune system or someone in immediate family. This is not the new invoke thing to do in Fayette County.
Yeah, I'll just say this, I think, you know, and it gets back to the point that was kinda raised at the very top of the meeting is around being able to provide an option for our families. I mean, we are in, unprecedented at times as we kinda deal with this COVID nineteen, we don't necessarily know. I mean, you, we were thinking that we'd probably be more at a flattened stage at this particular point, and we're looking at where we are today. So I think the thing around flexibility, but having an opportunity to put something in place to be able to help our kids and help our families, especially those that have requested it, um, there as well. So, um, I know that, you know, maybe the issue of timing as we think about it, but we just don't have a lot of time um, to really wait, and parents wanna basically have, you know, at least these options presented to them so they can know how they're gonna. How they're gonna navigate their families going forward, so in my conversations, you know, with a lot of families, teachers, administrators, et cetera. It's like, you know, the flexibility that we all have to, you know, face right now in these unprecedented conditions and present, I should say, conditions. It's something that we just gotta, you know, be able to, as a board team, coalesce around it and try to move forward what's best for our kids, so.
Yeah, this is Fayette County students that'll be taught by Fayette County teachers using a virtual platform.
All right, if there are no further questions. A recommendation is in order to approve the staff recommendation to approve the contract for virtual learning services and content to be provided by the Florida Virtual School.
Clarify, Board Chair, that was option one?
Yes. And I apologize, I'm a little grainy, but my kid used my thing for Zoom therapy before this, and I think he played with my camera. So. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the staff?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Second.
The second by Mr. Daniels, is there any further discussion?
I am planning on voting no, but I did want to explain my vote. Personally, I see this as a missed opportunity to really invest in our own staff, to kind of move into a new era. Where we could have trained our staff more on, um, how to use Google Classroom, how to use all these platforms. Especially our teachers in primary grades, and so, uh, with these COVID dollars, uh, that's a lot of money to spend. That's a lot of professional development that could have had, happened in our local schools. And I also feel confident that given that professional development, that we would be able to keep our, some of our teachers who are compromised. In their schools, teaching those kids. So, um, I just, I really appreciate the time that went into this and the recommendation, but, um, I just wanted the opportunity to explain my vote.
And I wanna jump in here, because, um, I wanna make sure that the board knows that our staff has been getting these trainings this week. Uh, oh, go on Manny.
I, I, I'm going after you, partner.
Oh, well, that's what I was gonna say is, um, I know Soraya talked about this a little bit, the two days of onboarding that all the staff. Is having to, um, is having to participate in, is looking at these platforms. It's also, they're doing trauma for NTI, so all of our staff is getting some trauma training in the district. Um, it's, the, all, uh, so all those platforms that you just mentioned, they are all getting. But I think the difference here is, in some of these schools, you're only talking about maybe one child in a whole elementary school. That this really applies to, and so that's why it'd be very difficult for, um. You know, I think what I heard from teachers was kind of the opposite, is that they didn't have the capacity to. Meet their classroom and then do a full-time virtual for a child on the outside as well, and so that was the shift. But I wanna make sure this board knows that that's what Soraya was really talking about, is that, um, I mean, I sat in a three-hour meeting last week. Where they went through every single training that everyone was going to be getting this week. Um, and, and like she said, they're feeling, they're being, um. Videoed so that when we bring on these new staff in the upcoming week, that they can asynchronously watch them as well. Um, so I just wanted that clarifying point, and Manny, if you wanna elaborate just slightly more.
Yes, I just wanna expand, and I'm gonna have Soraya and Kate talk about the wonderful professional learning for our teachers. Because the, our teachers are instructional leaders, um, instructional staff said in the employee survey. They wanted to know how to engage students in distance learning. That was number one, Soraya, Kate, talk about the, 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 the training, et cetera, what we have planned. And we also got a partnership company with the University of Kentucky as well for this. So, you know, the teachers are being trained, and the teacher that is sitting in our school now, maybe a teacher. Because of what you said, well, remember Morris, maybe a teacher that's in the virtual learning academy. We don't know at this time, cause we don't know the sort of, we gotta get the students to find out sort of the courses. You only need one, um, kindergarten person with nineteen students, right now. It opens up, you could have more, but go ahead, Soraya, and, uh, Kate, as I digress.
Um, so just to share, I'll share, and then Kate can, can bring us home. Uh, just to, to talk about a little bit what Board Member, uh, Spires was speaking on is. We have this week, um, all day, every day, uh, multiple opportunities for our teachers to engage in distance learning. Professional development, and it is specifically geared toward the virtual environment. Um, and that the plethora, it goes from different student populations and how you support students in the virtual environment. To trauma-informed care, uh, to just customer support and helping in, in, uh, engaging parents in the beginning. Uh, to even a distance learning framework and how that aligns with our instructional process and how teachers can essentially. Start to align their curriculum and, and all of their curriculum content. Uh, in a very strategic pathway and, and doing distance learning. So, we have three, um, tracks, so to speak, uh, in that professional realm. One is kind of a required track, and we have specifically aligned that to our three R. Uh, plan that you all saw earlier in this, in the month. Uh, so the PD that is required is directly linked to some component of the three R plan. Then we also have a track that's highly recommended, uh, and it might be specifically for new teachers. You know, new to our district, uh, or just other things that are highly recommended sessions. And one of the examples, I think also, is like Google Classroom, uh, we know a lot of teachers have been using it, but it's like, like ramping it up. And that's some highly, uh, recommended, and then another one, the third track is the value-added track. Uh, and that's really for principals and even teachers to go out and identify specific learning needs that they might want for themselves. Uh, and again, the options for that, there are some synchronous opportunities and there are some asynchronous opportunities. But everything that's done synchronously has been recorded, so that teachers can watch it asynchronously at their, at their leisure. So I'll let Kate add, if, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll ask Kate to add.
Um, and also, Board members, um, thanks to Superintendent Cox's leadership. We did reach out to University of Kentucky College of Education. And I am just so thrilled to announce that, yes, they are in agreement to come into partnership with us. For continued professional learning for our staff. Uh, we will see them, um, working shoulder by shoulder with our teachers, with our PLCs. Especially, uh, Ms. Morris, on the con, on the content area that you mentioned, which is, what are those most effective practices? When we're in a virtual setting, how do you engage children virtually? How do we keep them motivated while, while, while teaching, uh, and learning in a virtual setting? So I'm just so thrilled, of course, you know, I'm also, it's my alma mater, but I'm just so thrilled to announce that. This partnership will, will really fall into what I call the second phase of our professional learning. So we've got the base occurring this week, continued school-level professional learning next week, Ms. Morris. And then we will see UK can, to step in and help it, shoulder by shoulder and, uh, with our teachers and our. In our, in, especially with our PLC, so I'm just thrilled, thrilled to have that partnership.
And I'd like to add, because I failed to mention, I'm sorry Manny, I failed to mention that we've also brought in a lot of our, uh, teacher leaders. Who were identified as bright spots in our NTI. Uh, and so we are leveraging the experience of our own teachers as well, and helping to create some of those value-added PD sessions for teachers. So that's another piece I forgot to add earlier.
And underscore again, see, um. Madam Chair's point, the survey. Clearly stated, teachers were concerned about having to teach in-person and then virtual as well. That, you're, you're absolutely correct, that, that came out.
Well, and I think it's precisely because of the, um, talent of our educators, and then also the relationships they've built with our students. That, uh, my biggest concern to, I believe, Board Member Morris's point, is kind of the missed opportunity. To present a virtual learning academy model. Uh, that is, uh, uh, of which our educators in Fayette County are the architects. Um, you know, I, I, I got the RFP about three o'clock today, and just from looking at it and information that I've seen. Um, you know, Florida Virtual School has, uh, been in the news in Orlando recently. Because of some concerns about, you know, state takeover, mismanagement, those kinds of things, and we, we won't get into those weeds, but what, what. What I think, an, an approach that would probably be more practical. And it's something that, that we're doing, where I teach, is where everyone starts the year on NTI two D L. That gives us time to tap into these, uh, the educators that we're training, some of these excellent training programs that we're doing. And working with them and say, okay, how does a virtual learning academy, uh, model look? That's tailored to Fayette County Public School students, that's orchestrated by Fayette County Public School teachers. So that when we get to the point of returning to in-person, uh, if we do have educators, and depending upon our numbers. If we do have educators that are not comfortable returning yet to an in-person setting, because of, uh, their immunocompromised or their family members are. They could be the facilitators of that, and, and you could even have that, uh, school or program oriented. So we can continue some of these, uh, unique and specialized services we offer to Fayette County students. Uh, cause the numbers, for all we know, the numbers of, of those interested in virtual learning could be significantly higher. If there were, um, some of these options included. Uh, the other point, I think, that most of us have been hearing as the board is, you know, school starts in two weeks. Um, and it's asking a lot of families to learn about a, a new, uh, delivery model. Uh, and make a decision that they're locked into, and then stick with that decision. And I, you know, if I, 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 if, I don't see why we can't just start the year with NTI two, two D L. You know, take us to September twenty-eighth or for the first six weeks or what have you, and then that gives us some time to, uh, engage in these conversations. You know, Bo- Boyle is doing a self-paced option, once we get through NTI. Um, but, you know, that was preceded by a series of, you know, town halls with, with families and students and educators. And meetings with educators that, you know, they, uh, I was involved in a process of, uh, a train-the-trainer type of system. So, uh, that's my biggest concern here, that we're sitting here two weeks before the start of school. And that's putting our families in a very tough spot, and.
I, I would say size matters, so you might be able to do that in Boyle, and back home, I probably was able to do that as well. But in a system this large, it's hard to get everybody on the same page, even in six weeks to design. Instruction and place it on a platform that's, um, solely uniquely, um, virtual. And so, that's the, the given take, you can build it yourself. And I think size has a lot to do with that, or you can buy something that's been out there, that's used by. Um, a district that's been using it for ten years. That in Kentucky, in the Commonwealth, that's been successful, and it's shared that this is sort of the model that they use. Along with, you had conversations with KDE, they'll tell you that that's right now the best model out there. It could, everything could be improved upon, but it's the best model that's out there. And I think lastly, the families are already affirming. That they want. An option, a virtual option, that's the window that we're in right now, and right now, I think Soraya said, three hundred families. And that's sight unseen. That's trust. For Member Murphy, that's called trust, they trust the board, they trust this district. To make sure whatever delivery model it's gonna be, that it's gonna be rigorous.
I'm kinda hearing the opposite from families, I mean, I do hear the two-week and the time crunch, but the reason I heard that. Was families didn't want to start NTI. And then, and when we, in July, that last meeting, we said, this may not break off to the, after Labor Day. And so that's where I heard from families freaked out about this two weeks, like, we haven't heard anything. And, you know, I talked about this on Monday night, like, we're starting to have popsicles with the principals virtually and things like that. And so there's confusion a little bit about, from the families, like, do I do this, and then I go, but.
Yeah, definitely.
Recently, what I'm hearing from families is that's really not what they want to do, they want to start on the twenty-sixth with the virtual. And I know that while it's coming today and it seems cramped, this is really something the three R committee really looked at. Back in the spring, when we did the surveys, you know, I think the first conversation I had with the superintendent was either late June or early July. When we realized families wanted this, and so we said, okay, who's doing this? Let's look at who's, you, rather than reinvent the wheel, and I think that's the really important thing, is this is who KDE said, do this. Um, and I think that size matters is an important part, because we are talking about more students. And we are talking about, and, and you know, to Mr. Murphy's point, that makes me nervous, what you're proposing. When I think about staffing, like, I just freak out about staffing already, how we're doing this, but, um, to be able to. Um, I think, you know, the, to me, that just, there's a lot of concern about the staffing piece at that point. Like, if you are starting at this point, then you're having to shift, and then people having extra duties. Um, but I, 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 I wanna stress to families, I mean, it, it does seem kind of rushed that we're here tonight at this point. But the point is, you know, we said this on Monday, after tonight's meeting, the information's gonna go out, a timeline is gonna go out. Um, and it's gonna answer a lot of people's questions, and I think settle them down pretty quickly. Um, but, I mean, right now, parents are just. I mean, parents are just stressed in general. Um, you, we don't know, you know, the other question I'm getting now, the, probably the bigger question is this, is when we go back. Are all our schools going back at the same time, are we going back on a hybrid, are we going back Monday, Tuesday, are we going back Thursday, Friday? I've got, you know, I, my work is wanting to know my schedule in October or November, do you have any hint as to what it's gonna be? Like, those are the, I mean, parents are just frantic at anything at this point. And so, but I think tonight will calm them down, but the feedback I am hearing from parents is they don't wanna start. NTI and then switch, they want to start that virtual, that on the twenty-sixth, on the same day. And they wanted to start on the twenty-sixth, cause there was some concern, I talked to a couple of different families today. That wondered if where we said Labor Day, were we just not gonna bring those, the virtual in at all, until Labor Day and start them later? And so I think, you know, everyone's gonna start on the twenty-sixth, and you're gonna either start your homeschool, or you're gonna start your virtual school. And, um, you know, there'll be orientations before, just like there were, you're gonna meet your teacher, you're gonna meet your principal. Or whoever the program chair is, or, or whatnot, um, and your, your, um, teams will be calling you. And so, I mean, I think this, as a parent, seems pretty aligned with the experience that I would get at another Fayette County school.
And again, because we are who we are, and we're about equity and excellence. When we come, when I contacted KDE, and I said, you know. To learn more about these statutes, the regulations around our virtual learning, uh, academy. If you get smart, I go to them, they, you know, but, and they mentioned again, the best program in the state of Kentucky. As, as, as a district, uh, that we need to reach out to as well, and we did that due diligence. And asked them questions, et cetera, how do you do it? They've been doing it for ten years right here in the state of Kentucky. Um, and so that was sort of important to note, uh, for me and for, for the team.
In, in the references, in the RFP, it has, um, there are three references. One is Oklahoma, uh, Union Public Schools in Oklahoma. One is the Georgia Cyber Academy, and then one is Granville County Schools in North Carolina. What, what, what are the Kentucky districts that are utilizing this?
It's, uh, what is it, Barrington, no, 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 the district, they're, they're called a Babel, but it's Barrington.
And Barron County.
Oh, okay, Barron County.
Oh, yeah, uh, Barron uses it for their credit recovery program, I think, if I'm not mistaken, is that?
No, you mistaken.
No, Barron has a, a full, full-on virtual academy.
Six through twelve. It could be, I mean, they, they got their, their students in there, complete credit recovery, but that thing is run like a well-old machine. And if it is just credit recovery. And if it is just credit recovery, there's a lot of Dago students recovering credit that I think it's more than just credit recovery. I think, uh, where's V? And Soraya, you work closely with them.
Mm-hmm. It is, it is a program for initial credit. It's not, I mean, they may also utilize it for credit recovery. But they take students from across the state, um, in their virtual academy.
So what does it get my, called, they called it Barrington. Is Barr?
Yes, sir, Barron, B-A-R-E-N.
And I made up my own county, my own, just that quick.
I mean, there's a hundred and twenty counties.
You were thinking Chicago, Manny. You were thinking Chicago.
Yes, I was thinking of back home.
All right. Are there any additional questions? I know we have some movement break requests if we're gonna keep going. Which is fine, just wanna know if we have questions or if we're ready to call the vote. All right, see no questions at this time. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, sorry.
The motion passes three, two.
Thank you.
Right. The motion is in order to make this agenda dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty, on which action has been taken at the meeting and part of the minutes, as if copied, in the minutes verbatim.
So moved, Board Chair.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Daniels. A second by Mr. Love. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three, five, zero. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting in the Fayette County Board of Education.
I move to adjourn.
The motion by Mr. Murphy.
Take it.
Take it by Mrs. Morris. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are now adjourned. Thank you all for everything and have a great evening.
You too. Thank you, board team.